Grant in your mercy, just and honest government, help this community, Lord, empower this community to move forward into a bright future. And Lord, may you give us a grace to live together in unity and in peace. Through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, May 15, 2017. I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 The first item of business on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And Andrew, do we have any additions to that?
There are no additions.
Does anyone else have any additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Jim, thank you, Tom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. We have no public hearings this evening. Under awarding of bids, we will need a resolution awarding the construction services contract to Aztec Corporation in the amount of $46,607.85 and authorizing additional work not to exceed 25 percent to the base contract. Contract acceptable to the contractor for public improvement 5311, 2017 Seal Code Improvement Andrew, did you have anything to add to that? Brian's not here this evening, but I understand the bids were very favorable.
Your Honor, members of the council, our low quote was $46,607.85 and the engineer estimate was $72,000, so very good prices. And if acceptable, we'd like to do 25 percent additional of the bid price, so another $11,651. Just to let that money go further and get more streets covered.
Any questions from the council?
I'll offer a resolution.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Tom. Resolution is seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Resolution is approved. Under F petitions and communications, we have a proclamation for Public Works Week that you have in your packet. I won't read it all, and I wish I was here to hear this, but we have some people under the Public Works Department in attendance this evening. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works Departments and is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2017 as Public Works Week in the City of Fergus Falls. Thank you to the Public Works Department, all the work that they do. Under the open forum, we have a request from Cassie Jacobson to consider a ADA fishing pier at Hoot Lake Boat Access. There's, you have a copy of the request in your packet as well as some pictures that Cassie has provided. So I'm going to turn it over to Cassie.
I don't know how to use a microphone.
How good so far?
Out at Hoot Lake, we have a big problem where not just the handicapped, but the general public and, you know, the general community does have problems with fishing. The dock is very small. It's only about as long as a boat and about as wide as my walker. So, and the dock is, I think, in need of repair. It was built in 2006, I noticed. And since then, I guess when the other open public access was open in our neighborhood before it was closed, there wasn't too many people in there. But now it's really getting a lot of use. More people are coming, more boaters, more swimmers, more fishers, people that fish. I would like to propose to have a, it doesn't have to really be an ADA dock, but because of me, you might think so. But I would propose a dock that would be away from the swimming area and the boat dock. The picture that shows the dock in the long shot, that's where the dock is and to the left is where everybody swims. So it's not a good place for us to fish. I mean, not even the little kids who have to wait way out. Some people have to wait way out in order to avoid the swimmers and that. There are some areas that need to be desperately repaired. There's big holes in some areas by the dock and there are deep holes that have grown over, over by the swimming area. And I noticed that when I was taking my pictures, the place where the DNR parks, the boat dock in the winter, I noticed that that would make a beautiful spot because it's pretty well clear out in that for people, for a boat dock, for the community, not just for people who are handicapped, but for everybody that fishes.
Thank you, Cassie. I believe that we can refer this to, to the Public Works Department being in its Public Works Week, but also to the DNR. I see the representative of the DNR is here in the audience, but I think he's here to speak for a different, but this is a cooperative effort as your photos.
Yeah, that's what I noticed on the sign. It was both city and DNR owned.
And Rod, you're in the, you're in the Autorizer's Quanis, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah. I'm in the.
I see you guys assign on that thing.
I'm in the Rotary, sorry.
Oh, Rotary.
Your Honor, that's what I was just thinking was that I know the Quanis Noon Club are very, very strong and very, very active and this would make a very good service project. For anybody that's in Quanis.
Tom, Ruffer, I think is in there.
Listening.
Doing my research.
I'm at Noon Quanis as well. And Noon Quanis is working on another initiative in a different city park that would probably stretch.
A different city?
Sorry, different park within Fergus Falls. Let me clarify. And I think that's probably going to stretch.
So we need a competition then between another service.
Your Honor. I just had a question for Kath. If we, what I hear you saying is you want more place to fish, right?
I want a safe place for all the fishermen.
Not necessar, yeah. So it's mainly being able to fish and have a place that's open and.
And safe for those.
Safe for everybody and not getting in the way of swimmers and boaters and.
Yeah, I've seen some little kids, maybe about that tall, try to fish off of that and it's not safe for them. Was it Labor Day, I believe it was? I, some people had come with little kids. I was on the dock fishing and one of the, I would say maybe a two and a half, three year old was by the dock and went under and he was almost totally under before his mother got him. So I want a place where everybody is going to be safe, especially the little kids if they're going to be fishing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We agree to refer this to the Public Works Department and work with the DNR and possibly with the Autorizers. Is there a desire there to?
Who did the one up here that was kind of, that was an ADA one that got put in?
The levee?
Yeah.
That was a city. Steve, maybe you could speak to the.
Veterans Park.
Veterans Park, please. Yeah. Oh, I thought you were referring to the levee.
ADA one, kayak entrance, wasn't it?
Yeah, the kayak, at Veterans Park, it's a kayak, ADA-approved kayak launch ramp. We have, currently have two ADA fishing piers in the town, one at the levee and one out at DeLagoon Park. The ramp that Cassie's referring to at Hoot Lake, it's actually for boats launching and retrieving. It's not designed to be a fishing pier or a fishing dock. That's why it's short, it gets boats out and get boats in. I think if you want to do a self-fishing pier along there, you would want to get away from that activity of boats retrieval.
On that boat launch or the canoe and kayak launch, we received a DNR grant for that one. So that was a nice cooperative effort.
I think it was like $30,000 or $40,000. $41,000?
Yep.
I made the recommendation that we pass it back to Public Works and we see if we can do something similar.
That motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Under, pardon me, under the consent agenda, you have a copy of the consent agenda in your package, packet. It's rather lengthy, lengthy. He's also up on the board. Is there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove and discuss?
Can I remove number six, please?
Six has been removed. Any other items anyone would like to remove? If not, is there a resolution to approve the consent agenda minus item number six as presented?
I'll leave that, Your Honor.
Second. Ruffer, thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number six, resolution authorizing staff to add additional water main replacement to Public Improvement 5951, the Cascade Street reconstruction product, project. Anthony, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to know where I was going to get funded from because obviously it's $19,000 and obviously it would probably come out of, you know, water. And as this is for the library, I'd like to see it moved over that charge to the library project.
Your Honor, I.
If it's not that case already.
The rationale to do it in this order at this time through this other contract is that this contractor will be coming back to put the final wear on the road. And if this work isn't done now, we'll have to tear out that road to install this at the time of the project. And essentially, you know, the more times you start doing patch repairs, you start asking for.
I understand that, but I just wanted to see it, I'd like to see it, the actual $19,000 charge to the library project rather than to the roads. So it can be a general entry is all I'm asking for.
And Brian and I did talk about that and he did mention that of either all of it or a portion of it going directly to the library project. So I'll review that with him, but yep, that's something we easily can take care of internally.
Is that satisfactory?
Yep, thank you.
Do you have, will you drop a resolution?
I'll offer the resolution then to approve the addition to the contract.
Second. Jim, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we will need a, we have a second reading of ordinance 587, series amending chapter 11, alcohol sales. We've discussed this. If there's any questions, I'll direct them to Rolf. Jim?
Your Honor, I'd just like to make a statement that I will vote for this mainly because it's a state law and we have to adopt it here. I am not for.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other comments, questions for Rolf? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Next, we have presentation of claims in the amount of $2,686,280.69 and we will need a resolution to pay those bills. I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Darren, friend, second. Do we, any questions on that? Direct them to Bill.
Yeah.
Rod, do you have a question?
Yeah. Can we just pause and realize that we're spending $2.6 million? It's part of our tax, whatever, and just kind of thank the taxpayers of Fergus Falls that they're still with us on some of this stuff? Thanks.
How long a pause would you like?
That's good.
One minute silence.
Thanks, Rod. Okay, we have a resolution, a second and a pause. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under Board Committee and Department reports, we will need a resolution approving a variance request from Dan and Brenda Hanson to allow a reduced setback of 16 feet in lieu of a 35-foot setback from the front western lot line of an R2 zone located at 730 West Beach. I will let April speak to that. Before I do, I think at our last meeting, someone wanted pictures and we've got lots of pictures.
Good.
Thirty pages worth of pictures.
A little reading, too.
Trees in order to get some pictures.
So, Your Honor and council members, as you refer to the projector over here, this lot is located on a corner lot. For our city ordinances, the setback on a corner lot is 30 feet from the front lot line, so there'd be two front yards. What the Hamsons are proposing is an addition onto their garage on the western side and the green lines, they're kind of light, but that represents the parcel line, one right next to the 25. So they're wanting to go 16 feet in lieu of the 35 feet required by our city ordinances. The Board of Zoning reviewed this, did the three test practicality test of, does it detract from the proximity of the neighborhood? Is it undue hardship? And does it, is it something they've created? And everything that's there is in favor and the Board of Zoning felt that they could support this request.
Pardon me, anyone have any questions for April? Darren?
With that, by, they're approving it, I'm all for it.
I can pull up more pictures if you guys want more.
This is great. All I wanted to see is like proportionally where, where an amendment is rather than shooting blind. I'm a visual person.
Scott?
I'll offer it. Or is it, yeah, I'll offer it. I thought.
Yeah, I offered it.
Oh, I seconded. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear that part.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we have a committee of the whole recap and then we have next steps for the regional treatment center buildings and campus and then we have RTC placeholder bills for the legislative session. I think what I'd like to do is have Andrew give a committee of the whole recap and then I want to give the people who are in attendance today an opportunity to speak. They heard us talk in our committee of the whole. We're going to ask that people, not we're going to ask, we're going to require that people are respectful, that they're not repetitive and that we're going to give everybody two minutes to speak, hopefully that people can make their points in there. Again, most importantly, we're going to make sure we keep it respectful. Before we get to that, Andrew, did you want to talk about the video we got?
Yeah, I don't have. I don't have much to add other than the discussion, Senator, on the fact that we need to make a plan moving forward so we can ask for legislative approval of new bond dollars to fulfill whatever resolution the council puts forward in the coming weeks or days. There was a lot of discussion centered around the effects on other developers, the status of the current developer, and then other ideas discussed about what the best way forward is. But I think everybody agrees that we have to come up with a plan going forward and do our best to work with the state of Minnesota and trying to secure funding and execute whatever the plan is. I think everybody here was at the meeting, so I don't have much more to add.
All right. With that, I think we should open up to those members who have sat here for the last two hours and we're not going to be able to give you as much time as you probably would like, but we do want to listen to everyone who has something to say. Again, just keep it respectful. Let's not be overly repetitive and try to keep your comments to two minutes. Chris?
Do I need to come up?
Please do. Yes, state your name and your address.
Chris Schulte, Director of Otterkill County Historical Society. So I just want to say, I'm encouraging you to start the process and not to get bogged down in semantics and I know it's overwhelming and it's hard. So I agree with Rod and I agree with you, Ben, we have to start somewhere. So perhaps this is a good place to kind of reinvigorate a steering committee to start developing the plan, you know, to go forward, starting, you know, with moisture remediation and to address these other issues. But that way, we're getting community involvement from a variety of different sources, organizations, whether it's the school district, the arts community, economic development. So, you know, let's get a group together, let's start the process now of developing a plan and let's try not to get bogged down in details that are going to derail the process. I know it's overwhelming, let's take one step at a time.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello. How y'all doing? I'm Jason with MB Global Legacy Dream Center. Can I get, allow for me to play one video that's about two minutes, if that's okay with you, Ben?
Sure.
If you could go to.
You know, quite honestly, we weren't planning on having any presentations here, but you know what? If it's two minutes, you have two minutes to play.
If I can have two minutes, I'm going to play my video.
Do you kind of have a flash drive or something?
No, just YouTube, or just go to Dream Center, get me up off of Google. Please, thank you. I have a vision for the current project.
Does somebody else want to speak while we set this up?
Hi, I'm Cody Sundor. My address is 416, 320, or 416 East Cherry Avenue. And I don't know if you guys remember this, some of you, there's new faces here since the last time I spoke up here. I was representing a developer and hotelier, Charles Knell, through Bernard Hotels International, through the development of the RTC. And in August of 2015, I had made the, initiate, initiated the introduction between Guy Taylor, Lynn Taylor, and former mayor Hal Leland about him coming to Fergus and again, because he was actually on the same development team, but as an under role with Ray Wiley, if you guys remember him. And he was the main investor in that whole, the whole ordeal with that. But the whole thing about that was Ray didn't want to get any more money from him. He wanted more money from the city because he didn't want to give up any more control over the development of the RTC. And Charles and his team, you know, came together and we talked with Mayor Hal Leland and then we had got an email back from him saying that you got, the city wanted to take a break from discussion about the development for a while and they never got back to him. And as of right now, he still has a set aside $200 million for the development of the RTC and he wanted to work directly with the community and the city council and other developers to see what would best fit the community in this area while still giving him control over the complex. And I think about why that happened, but it was probably because of the election and, you know, new members coming up. But I think it would be a great idea to start another, have me initiate another contact between you guys and Charles Knell and then possibly see where it goes from there. And if you guys want to do a letter of invitation to have him come back down here and his team to go through that and work with other developers and not having to use the taxpayers' money, you know, to go through all this and just use him and his team for his money, you know? So with that said, that's, I'm just here to let you guys know that's out there. And Guy Taylor still has all those emails that we initiated from back in August 2015. So all the information that we have talked about prior, he still has all that. So if you guys would like to do that, there's an idea. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Cody. All right, I think we have our video queued up.
Yeah, so I used to be an event coordinator for the Hard Rock out there in Las Vegas, Nevada, and also put together the Sturgis 75th Motorcycle Rally with over 1.2 million attendees. And I've been a part of the Dream Center for a minute now, so we're looking to bring the Dream Center to Fergus Falls. Y'all have an amazing architect here and let's play the video. Yeah. I don't know why it's not that on the thing. So anyways, if you see the hospital there, we've already done over $70 million in reconstruction. We've actually taken the hospital, St. Anne's Hospital. We have a lot of philanthropists in the entertainment industry, also with oil tycoons and stuff like that that are more than happy to come out and I think Mr. Fish is really going to like this. I'd like to actually have a part of the building donated just for veterans so that way we can have a facility for veterans to come out and be able to have a place to stay as well. What it is, is a 24/7 facility to help people coming out of different types of trepidations and to re-enter them back into society. We've also got programs designed where we're working with music producers to teach them the art of Christian entertainment with Bethel Worship School of Music. And also there's a lot more. We're also looking to work with the Special Olympics to have a training facility out here. So it's just kind of my two minutes. I'm sorry that the video's not playing, but something for y'all to be looking forward to. I've been speaking with Ben. I love you, you're amazing. I love your passion over there also. And let's see if MB Global Legacy Dream Center can be a good fit for the community. Not asking y'all to help me with any money doing it, I'm asking y'all to give me the permission to bring in my people to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Can we get the website so we can personally watch it?
Actually, I do have a website that's almost done. I've sent a link to Ben and then if you'd like, I'd get y'all's cards and I'd be more than happy to send you everything. So, yeah. And then we'll set up another date so I can come in.
I can forward the email you sent me to.
With the link?
Right, yeah, it's not, it's not finished to put out yet because I wanted to see what the council's going to say first before I go start raising $100 million. So, yeah, so thank you.
Thanks. All right. Your Honor, could we also get a summary of the previous speaker's info, that he had, just a summarization of that hotel idea, just so we can look at that from Lynn?
Yeah, from minutes, I.
Yeah, whatever, just a summary of it. Yeah, so we know up to speed.
What happened with that particular though?
And I think you should save the tunnels. We actually have a lot of tunnels with ours and they actually, I mean, I know we're not going to film any Freddy Krueger movies, but before we purchased the hospital, where Freddy Krueger did his thing, everybody likes to come and do a tour of it. So I think we should save the tunnels. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone else have any comments? Scott?
My presentation is not a video, it's just PowerPoint and seven slides on it, if that's all right. My name is Scott Kwame, resident of Fergus Falls, 219 East Franklin Avenue. And while I've got just a minute at the podium, I wanted to personally thank Andrew and Lynn, who's not here, and Steve Plaza for their work to get things ready around Lake Alice last weekend for the Lake Alice 100. There were picnic tables out, the road had been patched on the east side and things were cleaned up on that house that had to be demolished and I believe that was a really great day. So, not that I'm a real big bicycler, I only made two laps, but it was.
I have 98 to go.
So you guys have all heard of Ole and Sven. Can I take this out? Yeah, that's easier. You guys have all heard of Ole and Sven and when they were young, they were out doing some target practice with a case of beer bottles that they had and they got down to where their, they had their dad's old revolver and they got down to where they only had two shots left. And so Ole says to Sven, hey, we only got two shots left and there's only one bottle left. Tell you what, let's compromise. Let's play Russian roulette and see who gets to take the last shot. And Sven says, oh, that. And Sven says, "Well, that sounds a little iffy. Let's take one bullet out of the gun and then I'll do it." Compromise was kind of the theme of this article that you, that Ben presented. And it's something that is, it's shaky ground for me to hear that word and wonder where it goes. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The question that I guess I'm finding myself asking over and over, whenever the subject of the RTC is on the table, is how are we gonna measure the success? I mean, no matter what the plan is, no matter what the proposal is, how are we gonna know that it was completed when it was done? How do we know if it was good when it was done? How is the success measured? And first of all, I'd like to say that it's not by how many bricks go to the landfill. I think there's lots of ways to measure the success of a project like this, and that would be the first place to not go, as far as I'm concerned. I think we're looking for economic improvement. I think we're looking for job creation. That site was a very economic driver in the city at one time, and we need that kind of economic activity and job creation here again. And third, I think we need to respect the historical and architectural significance of the building. Go to the second picture, or can I do that here? The West Detached was the picture that was in the article in the paper. And you're right, Ben, it's a beautiful building. And you take a look at that and you think, wow, they just don't build them like that anymore. And that's true. Go to the second picture. This was the sense that I got when I read that article, that that's targeted for destruction. And over the course of the conversations that this council has had for the next, last many months, that's the image that comes to mind when I hear the things that are being said about demolition. Now, it may be that that doesn't apply. It may be that what'll be eventually demolished will be the powerhouse or the administration building or something else. But the way the conversation seems to float is that it sounds like that right there. And I just have real trouble with that because, as you said and as we know, that building is the oldest building up there. It's the most historically significant building. It's obviously architecturally significant. And so I'm here to say, we should be thinking of how to save it, not how to landfill it. There's a fear of this cost of development and redevelopment that has been also suggested to be one of the driving factors for why we've got to look for demolition. We've got to make a plan for demolition. Go to the next slide, if you would, please. In the study that was done in 2005, when this was on the fringe of being handed to the city by the state, a study was done to see what the feelings were for the people in the city. Only 7% of the people in the city identified the cost as any significant great concern. That was not their greatest concern. The greatest concern was whether it was gonna be an economic driver for the city. Creating local employment was 42% of the response. Preserving historically significant buildings was 35%. Creating local economic development was 11%. Only 7% was reflected the cost of the city as being a concern for what might happen I'll try to wrap this up. I know two minutes is what you're after. But the significance, I guess, that I'm trying to get at here is the architectural significance, historical significance, and the fact that there are three towers up there. There's not a tower. This isn't a place where we're gonna save a tower or the tower. There are three towers. Let me go to the next picture. And also in this study, pretty hard to read the small print there for you, so I'll read it. On page 10 of section 2, "The market feasibility study should review options for incorporating the three towers and central hall of the Kirkbry Building into the uses for the site. We believe this landmark could be included in the design of a new high school, incorporated housing, or could be turned into a small community center, and various other suggestions were made." The high school's off the table as a project anymore. That's been taken care of. The ice arena is off the table. The library is off the table. All of those were things that were suggested at this time. Those things are off the table now. They've been dealt with. The city's moved ahead on those. So the point is, it's time for a new market study. And this goes along with what was just said earlier here in the first couple hours. We need to know what we're gonna do, and in order to know what to do, you need a new plan. And so I'm speaking in support of the development of a new plan. Go to the next picture, if you would. The letter of intent that was currently submitted had two points, among others, that were identified as important. Number four being ensure the project's compatibility with a larger community of Fergus Falls, and number five being determine the various public benefits by the project for the community.
Scott, I would like to respectfully ask you to wrap it up.
Gotta wrap it up?
Because we're talking about a plan, you know.
Yep. And I don't want it to be redundant, but I wanted to point out that this stuff was all presented, and it's in the record. And the city needs to do it. It's the city's asset. This is an asset of the city that needs to be managed and maintained by the city. And there's three towers there. You need a plan to be able to measure what you're doing, and so do it right and create and update a master plan. Whether it means by hiring a historic development consultant, as you suggested, or by amongst yourselves, taking the training to learn how to do development. But the city needs to be the driver, and we need a map to that destination. And if none of you can draw the map, then hire a consultant.
Thanks, Scott. I will, being that you referenced my article, I will just make a couple comments and clear the, for the record. First of all, as far as how do we measure success, I would say we measure success by getting a project done. And that's gonna involve compromise. So we, you know, success isn't coming up with something that looks great on paper. It's actually coming up with something that we can get done. Second of all, the intent of that article, I believe, I think I was clear in the previous, in the meeting at the committee, the whole, I think we can save that building. I think we have to save that building, but I think it's gonna take bold actions, it's gonna take compromise, and it's gonna work within a certain path. So let me be clear, I do think there's a way that we can save it, but I do think it's gonna involve compromise that does not save the entire footprint of the main facility. So, just to be clear on that. Anyone else want to address this? John?
Your Honor, City Councilman, my name is John Stroick. I reside at 519 West Fast Avenue. I'd just like to say, I've been following this for 12 years. I was in the meetings, the original one with the state, when the state gave it to Fergus Falls, asked if we, what we wanted to do with it and what our opportunities were. And there's one thing I've reiterated over and over, and I'd like to just go through that again, is that in Travis City, Michigan, on their building, they did not take on the whole project at once. For whatever reasons, we have kind of went that direction. For 12 years, we've said, somebody come in and do the whole thing. That's a very big accomplishment and a very, almost impossible thing to do. In Michigan, they did a part at a time. They did a little bit at a time, and they kept it going. I think that that's our best opportunity, is to try to work this. If we really want to save it, we gotta look at, okay, can we do some with projects in the workings and make a plan that will save what we can or what needs to be saved, but not do the whole project at once? That's a big handful. And it's at a point now where, if you're gonna demolish it, it's gonna cost a lot more than 12 years ago. The expenses are gonna be astronomical, I think, if you start really studying it. And I really appreciate everybody trying to save it. I think that's the right attitude. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Jeff, did you want to speak to the council?
Hello, I'm Jeff Schlossman. I'm with Campus Development. We are developing the red brick buildings right now, and just honored to be here again tonight. And some of you weren't around when we originally took over those five properties, but they were all headed for demolition. And we said, wait. Now we have one building fully occupied, completely like brand-new, redeveloped, following SHPO's guidelines and State Historical Society and working with Otter Tail and everybody on it. Got the second one approved and done and completed, and about 80% occupied. Some of our best units are still available. But we're just honored to be here. But I can't say how vital SHPO was in the process, and they're very important because that 40% tax credit, I mean, every developer, including current ones or potential developers, I mean, it's a great deal. And even for the city perspective, if you look at it briefly, you know, if you wanted to build a library, if you wanted to, if you wanted to do something for the school district, work with a private developer, get 40% tax credits, reduction in cost of building, get the building handed back to you, brand-new, historically correct, you've got, you've got a project, you know, and a full building. But I, but back on, for campuses' sake, I gotta say these three things. You know, first off, we're worried about the past. We've got tax credits now for the buildings we've done. We don't want to lose those because of not following SHPO guidelines and the city not following those guidelines. We've got potential buildings to be redeveloped in the future. We're gonna be watching very closely what's going on to make sure that we're following the SHPO guidelines so we can redevelop those and get the tax credits. Otherwise, we'll have to find another way to redevelop them. And then, and the third thing is, you know, just the main project, we're willing to cooperate with whoever owns the main project as far as redevelopment of all that. And I highly recommend, you know, what you're doing and what Ron is doing and discussing these four points, and also talking about what's important for the developers is to be able to do it in phases. And that could be looking at each building as its own separate entity, and that would be a good idea for the study, to look at it as if it was all separate buildings. And then all of a sudden, you've got 10 developers that'll do 75,000 square feet, and you're done. But allow that to happen over a period of time. So that might allow one developer to take over and develop the whole thing over a period of time. It just doesn't happen overnight. I mean, West Acres was built in phases, that's a million square feet. It took phases to do it. And if we can present it to all these developers that you can do it in a phase, you know, you raise your first $50 million or $20 million, whatever it is, or do $10 million or, or one section of one floor, I mean, I think it could all work. But that takes some good planning, and I think SHPO is into saving buildings. So they're gonna do whatever they can to help Fergus Falls save this complex, and it's a good idea to just work with them. I love the fact you're gonna open up that conversation with them. It's gonna help save the property. And I like your four points. I mean, I mean, the hazardous material areas and that kind of thing need to be cleaned up, you know, as far as the tunnels go. I mean, that can be a debate continuing, but they need to be dry. I mean, a sump pump and a little electrical power can, can dry them out, at least. But there's, you know, or you could demolish them if SHPO says, that's okay, you know. But be careful, and, but at the same token, it's a huge opportunity. I think there's a lot more opportunities that are in this room. And if you split it up into the little pieces, you might have one developer do it over a period of time in phases, each piece as a phase, or you'll have, you know, 10 developers each do a section. And with that plan, I think you've got it made, so. And I just appreciate the opportunity of being part of that. And if we can save some of the buildings, you know, in the future, we're interested in doing that. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Anderson, 616 East Mount Faith, and I'm the Program Director at Springboard for the Arts. Hopefully you all got my letter. I won't go over that. I just wanted to throw out a few key points. One is the idea of collective intelligence and collective impact. How can we make a plan and a commitment to those two things? I think there's many ways, and I just want you to think about that. The other is that Springboard started our residency program just two years ago, and since then, we've had 45 artists come through from 15 different states. And these artists are attracted to the program first and foremost because of the Kirkbry, but then they come and spend time here in Fergus Falls, they go to the restaurants, they get printing done at Lundin's, they fall in love with this town, and many of them are saying if they couldn't find a job, they would move back. I think it's important just to bring that up. I really disagree that Fergus Falls can't be a destination for some of these things that seem really ambitious. But I moved here when I was 29. I'm still here. I bought a house. A lot of that is because of being able to have a great job here, and a lot of the funding that came for that job came because of our programming around the Kirkbry as it sat empty. We want to help. We want to keep helping. We have noticed that with our funding, like from the National Endowment for the Arts, that we've had to go through a lot of the same processes as SHPO. So in the future, the historic registry, registry status does affect nonprofit funding too, and I know that seems like a drop in the bucket, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that we would've had to give up some of our NEA funding around the Hinge Residency and the Kirkbry Weekend if we, if the historic registry status was affected. I think that's all I wanted to say for now. Just hopefully you read my email with some more ideas and optimism. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else have any comments? All right, thank you, everyone. Next, then, I guess, is a conversation from the council as far as the next steps for the redevelopment of buildings and campus. Are there thoughts on moving forward, directing staff to seek proposals on what it would, what it would mean to get a proposal from a historical architectural consulting firm? Timelines, what that process would look like? Anthony?
Obviously, I apologize, I wasn't here for the earlier session, but I think that before we commit to spending money, we need to figure out also where, where the legislature's going in terms of the approval of this final, the final funding. But, and Bill might have reiterated this, but how much free cash do we have left? In terms of not restrictive?
Not so much that's not restricted. We have $300,000...
Maybe $40,000 that we're sitting on, but we have some restrictions on that, things we make commitments for, of taking out some tunnels for, say, $100,000. We have some contingencies of some money we would want to get back from the 1.9 if that gets approved. If we ultimately, if we weren't to get approved for that, we'd have to detract from that. So you start whittling that down, the other transfers we're gonna make during the year, you could get down under $100,000 in a hurry, so.
All right.
Would that be enough money to hire a consultant, do you think?
I have no idea. I mean, until we, until we, until we...
I guess, I guess I would like to have staff look into what it would cost to hire that consultant.
Okay.
I just think that we should wait till the May, or the June meeting to find out where we sit. We don't know where we're at. I mean, if we start spending all that money, and the electric bill starts coming out of taxpayers' money, I mean, there's a lot of things are coming out every month, the mowing. We should just wait and see where this legislation session goes so we can start planning what money we have left for the next year.
I think, yeah, I, okay, that's fair enough. I think to Jim's point, I don't think we're spending any money.
No, we're not gonna spend any money. Just have them look into it, and we'll know better for the next meeting where we're at.
Ben? Is there, am I gonna add? Is that a, is that a...
That's a motion.
Is that a motion?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Second, Justin. Thank you. All right, yes, go ahead.
For the, looking into that person, McDonald Mac, are they, weren't they a national?
I believe that McDonald Mac is no longer working on the project because we've mentioned demolition. Is that accurate?
They what? I didn't hear that, what'd you say?
From what I understand, McDonald Mac is no longer working with StanTech because we, as a council, mentioned the word demolition.
Yeah, correct, Your Honor.
I didn't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but that's the way I understood.
Your Honor, members of the council, when we took previous action to explore with StanTech some of the costs of demolition, McDonald Mac pulled away from the project at that point as that does not fulfill the mission of their firm. So we could approach them if they wanted to work on this. You know, based on that interaction, they probably would not, but there are other firms out there that potentially could work on a project like this.
There's a number of firms that could.
Your Honor, what are we asking of them? I mean, I think if we're gonna go and ask somebody to quote something, we have to be very precise in what we're asking for.
Sure. Well, I'll take a stab at it. Go ahead, Rod.
All right.
Yeah, again, Jeff Schlossman, Campus Development. We worked with McDonald and Mac to get our historic approvals, so they really specialize in that, so they know that area really well. I highly recommend them. And, you know, my feeling is, if you don't need, if you're hiring them, you're not talking demolition, you're talking options, and I think you're okay then. So talk different histories. So, so talk different historic options, because they've had the history of working with SHIPPO on, do you leave the stairway in, or do you take it out? Is this historical, is this not? You know, what's the compromise? And they're, that's what they do, you know? They work with the state all the time, and, and I don't think they wanna mess up their reputation, working on historical properties is all. So if you're purely looking at demolition, you don't need to hire them, but if you're looking at other options, they're the best, you know, so.
Sure, thank you, Jim. I would, I guess, Anthony, to answer your question, is, you know, Rod put up, put out his, you know, the four points, and in order to get there, if that's, if that's what that plan exactly looks like, but I think that would be a starting point, that we could agree to the compromise, to say, what does it look like that east, west, and the main tower, the three towers preserves that sightline, at least start there and say, to go through the process that it would require, that what the National Registry would require to get an answer of whether we can remain that, on that National Registry, what is the process? What, what, what would a proposal, what would a plan like that cost? I mean, at least to have that answer so that we can discuss it, because I don't know what it costs. I don't know what the timeline of that is. But that's what I would suggest that we start. Rod?
I'm just gonna say it again, and I, I'm not, I don't intend to be, you know, disrespectful. There's a motion on the floor, but I'm speaking about that motion in reference to others. I don't know how to do this. Rolf, do we have to vote on this first, and then can we speak to the points that were brought up in the meeting? Or, this is related to the points of dealing with those four points, as they've said, this historic consult. So I just, can we, can I just speak to that?
Sure.
Okay. So, I believe that people tend to think linearly, that is, all our lives are built on linear kind of equations. We learned that in school. A plus B plus C, D, you know, equals E. But there's other kinds of math, and when you get to big problems, you can't use linear equations. So here's what I see that we always get hung up on, I'm just making an observation. One person says we need to do this first, someone else says we need to do that first, and we end up trying to put it in linear order. Okay, I like that best, let's do that first. In the meantime, we're forgetting that there are numerous factors here that have to be dealt with at the same time. And if we don't do that, we are sentencing this institution to death. So I'm going back to the moisture problem. You can study, you can have a higher historical person, and if you think that's gonna somehow help solve the moisture problem, I think you're not wrong, you're just misinformed, because it's not gonna help solve it. To solve the moisture problem, you have to deal with the moisture problem right now. You have to go after that. And the same with these other things. Some of these can be put into effect without any more money put in. That is, going to the legislature and trying to decide about getting four areas, working with that four-area designation. We don't need a historical consultant to do that. That's a political question, all right? Now, you can get the historical consultant, but I'm just saying, if you think anyone else is gonna solve this problem for us, instead of us taking these actions, we're wrong, and we're sentencing that thing to death. So I'm just gonna reiterate that if we're gonna do this, let's put these points, if you agree that we have to take action, Chris has said it, Jeff has said it, if we're not gonna take action on some of this stuff, then we're just really kicking the can down the road. Yes, we are, and we're wasting that building, we're killing it. So I think it should be tied in, what I'm saying, to a five-point proposal then, if you're gonna hire this person, then put it in this context. And if you've got a better idea, anybody here, you lay out four points, but don't just say, hire someone and have them solve it. It's not gonna work.
Everyone suggests
I'm not talking to you, but I'm talking to everybody here. I'm not talking against that.
We need to solve this ourselves.
But I mean, we need, we need to put it into a five-point proposal then, but not do it separately, that's why
Can I just make one comment to your points?
Yeah.
I do not disagree with you. I think we're, the only thing we disagree on is that the legislature, the Minnesota State Legislature does not decide whether that building can remain on the National Historic Registry. That's, that's, that's why I heard directly from SHIPPO. They didn't say we couldn't do it, they didn't say we can't decide on our own fate, on our own destiny, but they said in order to do that, you would have to present a plan to the National Parks Service. That, that's, that's, that's the process.
I understand, that's fine.
Let's, let's do, let's come up with our own destiny as a council. But let's, I don't think we need to, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying you're saying that.
Right, I just don't wanna introduce too many extra tangential things that don't allow us to deal with the moisture problem, that's all I'm saying.
I think we can deal with the moisture problem, we will know if we have the money from, from the state legislature by the next week if the bill passes. I don't disagree. Let's take that, let's take on the powerhouse, the tunnels, let's do that. But why can't we just at least get a proposal to know what it's gonna cost to look at this, say, are we gonna move forward, are we gonna create our own future, or are we, are we not? Because just waiting around for it isn't gonna do it.
Jim? One of the parts of this, Rod, is because you wanna take this to the legislature, but we gotta make sure what we're taking to them is feasible, that we can do what we wanna do with, with those other pieces. And that's where this consultant comes in, telling us what can and can't be done. So that's why I made that motion. We can't just go to the legislature and say, hey, we wanna do this, this, and this. We gotta have some, some backup on that as to why we wanna do that, and if what we are doing is still feasible, and if we still keep everything that we wanna keep. The moisture and all that, I completely understand. These people are not gonna take care of that, we're gonna take care of that. The only reason I made that motion was that we need to find out what we can and can't do, and how we go about doing it.
And we need to get the money to do whatever plan it is we come up with, we have got to get the money. And I think that's our best way to get the money, is to come together.
Your Honor?
Yeah, we're just gonna keep it up here for this, we have a motion on the floor, so the council's gonna discuss this, and we're gonna vote. Go ahead, Anthony.
Can we know, I mean, can we know specifically what we're actually asking for? I, I'm not clear on, other than hiring a consultant, if we hire a consultant, I mean, it'll be, it'll, it'll wipe out our three hundred thousand dollars pretty, pretty quick.
You're not hiring yet, we're just asking for prices.
I know, you're looking for a proposal, but what is, what are we asking them? Because, you know, we need more than one bid, for, for one, and B, we have to be specific so that you can, we're not comparing apples and oranges. I mean, just hiring a consultant, I, I'll, I'll be a consultant for a day.
We're not, we're not hiring him right now, we're looking for proposals.
But you're asking for a proposal, but what are you asking for? Does staff know what they want?
Your Honor? I wish Brian was here, and he's not, but I think, no different than some of the other projects we worked on with StanTech, we went out and hired McDonald Mac as that historic consultant. I think just for the sake of tonight's discussion, I think we, as staff, maybe have a good idea of, of what you're looking for, and, and I think Brian and his discussions with StanTech can probably come up with a list of historic architects that can work on the projects, and maybe that's just the best thing to do. And I think that's kinda leads to what Jim's motion is, is that by the next meeting, we'll come back with some ideas of, these are the potential historic architects that we can work with, given the discussion that we had of what the scope of a project we're looking for. I think what the mayor said, what Rod has said tonight, I think we all have at least an idea, it's not gonna be an exact number, but I, I think we're, as we sit here, I think we kinda have an idea.
I think that's fair enough, and we don't ask, ask for a specific proposal, but I think what you're saying is right, to get a direct, get an idea of what this type of plan might cost.
You wanna know a ballpark, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I agree with Jim, I think that, what I was concerned is that we don't take that in lieu of these other. And maybe if we can have those four points, like answering, answering Anthony's question, that these are actually the things that, that, that he would consider, right? I mean, part of that, what he'd help us under, or she would help us understand these points, how to go at them, how to do things, right? Even the moisture remediation.
I just want us, I don't want us to put off the moisture remediation any, another minute, you know, that's all.
Yeah, and I think that we can just agree that, like, staff could come back and say, if you guys are going to go down the road of deconstruction that still tries to work within the guidelines to maintain the National Registry, this is what that process would look like, this is, is some examples of firms that can do it, and this is a ballpark figure of what we're talking about. Money. I mean, we're not, we're not asking for a specific proposal on a specific building.
I'm not sure how, you know, you phrase this, but you are a certified local government. The state of Minnesota through the SHIPPO provides grants for plans, and so how you phrase it, how you approach it, it's a possibility that you could, you know, compete for a grant to do this plan. But it just depends on how you phrase it and you put it together.
Your Honor, if I could, I, and we have a motion on the floor, and I second that, I just don't know, if we need an amendment, or if we can just have direction to staff to, I think we should reengage with McDonald Mac and see if they would entertain in that discussion as a potential with this
Could staff explore McDonald Mac along with, I think there's other
With others? Start with StanTech.
Could do the, this work, correct?
Yeah, and Mayor, council members, we have a list of those that we've received from SHIPPO of, of firms that would be similar, and, and a number of them have experience in Fergus Falls, whether specific to the RTC or not. McDonald Mac certainly would be that first point of contact, though.
Okay, thank you. So, everyone understand what we're voting on, we're not spending a dime, we're asking staff to come back with more information to us relating to what a plan would, what the potential cost going forward. Jim?
I was calling for the vote.
Call for the vote. It's a motion. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is, Andrew's gonna talk to us about the RTC placeholder bills for the next, for the next legislative session.
Your Honor, members of the council, before you, I just passed out a, a draft, or potential draft, of what legislation could look like for a bonding request for next year. As I indicated earlier, we need to introduce placeholder bills now at the end of this legislative session, so we can get on the bonding tour over the summer for the House and Senate Bonding Committees. At this time, the bill is truly that, a placeholder, it does not identify a dollar amount, and the intention would be that this bill would be amended when the session started, barring that we have a plan in place by then. So we would have, you know, several months with this session, starting in January, to get that plan in place. This legislation would be amended to match what that plan is, what the dollar amount we're seeking is, and then it can move through the process from there. So I've, I've gotten commitments from both Representative Nornas and Senator Ingberthson to introduce these bills a week from today, the last day of the session, if the council gives their blessing.
Any questions for Andrew? Scott?
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Brett, second, thank you. Brett? Any questions for Andrew? If not, this is a resolution, so we'll have a roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under old unfinished business, I'm sorry.
Question, under this area, we met as a legislative committee, we talked about the council approving us working on this, we talked about getting authorization specifically as a legislative committee to work with these, these items and others, right? Andrew, we, I just, could you clarify that?
My recollection, and Councilmember Appert can maybe clarify as well, is that we scheduled another meeting, and the intention was on June fifth to come forward with the additional authorization, and we already have the next meeting on the calendar.
Yeah, in a minute.
So in the meantime, anything we negotiate, or anything else regarding the RTC, as far as going to the legislature, it falls on the mayor to, I mean, any discussions, is that how?
I'm not sure what, I'm, I'm not sure what discussions would be between now and then, but
Okay.
If, if, if there are discussions need to take place, I'll be in close contact with the council.
Yeah.
We've got authorization to work on the one point nine-nine million dollars previously, and we have a lobbyist that's working on that effort, but other than introducing these bills, there will be no additional
I just can remember what we have authorization to do or not. All right.
Thank you, Rod. Under M., old unfinished business, Amy's gonna give us an update on the downtown and riverfront master plan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So switching gears from a, a topic that we, we haven't talked about tonight, but equal, um, almost equally exciting, probably, there is still ongoing work related to the downtown riverfront master plan. This is kind of the, the period, again, as I reported last month, where we're getting additional feedback. We had a community advisory committee meeting in late August, and now this month, we are focusing on getting some developer feedback, so specifically looking at those concepts that have been presented to the community and to the advisory committee, getting their feedback. We've had one go-to-meeting structured feedback session so far, and got some great input. What was really awesome is it really just affirmed that the ideas that we're thinking about made sense. It made sense from that developer's perspective, who does work in the area, and are looking at some additional meetings with developers the afternoon of the eighteenth, which is this week, the eve, that evening will be the Joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting, so when the consultants are here, we're doing some work prior to that. And so on that point, the downtown, or the joint meeting this Thursday, five-thirty to seven, hopefully get some nods. I know someone was gonna be out of town.
Will that be here?
It will be here, well, we're going to set up, like we do for our advisory committees, so the groups, the planning commission and city council will be at a table so we can have discussion.
I'll be gone.
You are the one, yes, yes. So, we can certainly sit down, Scott, and have additional conversation if you wish.
I'll go forward to it.
Okay. Just do it. The, we're getting the edge here. So, at the, at that meeting, we will, it is planned for five-thirty to seven, so we have about an hour and a half of time of conversation planned, and on that agenda, we will be highlighting the Glacial Edge Trail as well, since that does overlap with this study area, but then looking specifically at the concepts for the three specific development areas, the downtown area, the West River, which specifically is the dairy, and then high-level discussion on the East River area as well. So we're looking forward to that conversation. There is an online survey that is up and running, though there was a little glitch earlier today, so I'm not gonna direct people there right now, but that is up, and we're starting to push that out to the community in different social media and other areas, but we'll have it open for some time. It is up on the city's website right now, so you can certainly go and check that out, but we'll be fixing the intro page here shortly. And then we continue to plan additional developer meetings, so as we go into next week, we have a half-day, the developers are focusing on bringing some developers into their offices in Minneapolis and doing some more feedback and exposure to those plans to development groups in the Twin Cities area, so looking at a, a day next week to focus on that. And then ongoing planning around the July thirteenth open house, where we'll have preferred concepts presented in conjunction with the Shop, Move &amp; Groove event on July thirteenth. So we'll be, again, planning that larger open house and other activities to do some demonstration projects coming forward on that. We did receive, I don't remember if I announced it at the last meeting, five thousand dollars from Blue Cross Blue Shield for an Active Places grant, and we'll be using that, those funds to help do some demonstration activities around the concepts that are shown in the open, or in the concepts for the development plan. So we're looking forward to having more input and doing some pop-up demonstration activities over the summer.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Any questions for Amy?
We'll have this agenda sent out tomorrow to folks, we just got it today from the consultants, so.
Along those same lines, I've announced that May twenty-fifth, Thursday, so a week from this Thursday, I've invited Mayor of St. Paul, Chris Coleman, to Fergus Falls for the day to, you know, as many of you know, they had a lot of successes in St. Paul around their river and their downtown development, so I thought it tied in nicely with the master plan that Amy and Gordon are leading, and for him to come to a community, Fergus Falls that day, we're gonna do a, Rod's arranging a boat, tour guide of the river, a little thing on the river, we're peeking, we can see the river, we'll walk down the Riverwalk. I think Chris Shulke, hopefully, has agreed to do a little presentation of the downtown. But sure, everyone's invited out on that tour of the river and the downtown, and then we're gonna come back here to City Hall, right out here at City Hall Park overlooking the river, and we're gonna have a, a open town hall forum, a mayor to mayor, just talk about what they've done, what lessons we can learn, what successes led, you know, built upon one another, and so just really look forward to getting, getting some more exposure to that, that project. I think he can lead, lend some very good insights into what they were able to do and get, and get accomplished in St. Paul, so. what they were able to do and, and get, and get accomplished in St. Paul, so. And HKGI also worked on some of the plans that they were able to actually accomplish, so. That's that. So that's Thursday at 5 o'clock, City Hall, Thursday the 25th, 5 o'clock at City Hall. The tour of the river and downtown is going to be about 2:30. Everyone on the council is invited to attend that, so let me know. Just talk to me personally, let me know whether or not you're able to, to make it or not, so. That's what I had. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
I had one other, any other, any new business to come before the council? Rod?
Just one question, Your Honor, and that's, you know, obviously, it's maybe not new, but Brent brought up the idea of, is there any way to seal off tunnels without, you know, like, destroying, you know?
Historical.
Just stopping the moisture flow? Because here's what I'm thinking. We go out of another council meeting, and the moisture keeps eating away, we don't stop it, and I'm just, you know, I don't understand why we couldn't explore something to stop the moisture from coming in. Everyone here agrees with the main, saving the main tower, no matter what else, we, we've all agreed on that, no matter, you know, whatever. And to stop that moisture and mold to continuing in the warm weather and, and trying to get it so we could open it again, the first step is to stop the moisture from the tunnels. Is there any way we could explore that between now and the next meeting with some, anyone, we, you know?
Have the.
The historical guy or anyone? I mean, there's expanding foam products, there's things you could put in to stop the moisture from coming into that main tower building, which would help us in the long run, no matter what we do? Couldn't we, could we explore that with this guy that, or this, I don't know, where we're going to?
What about, has Dan Tech, I mean, we've obviously engaged Dan Tech in a lot of services. Have they ever given us?
Just a specific answer to that.
What, what, what solution to keeping the moisture from coming in the tunnels would be?
They, they presented, I believe, two different scenarios. One was to put a fillable product within the tunnels, and then the other one was the tunnel removal. And I believe we are still in the process of working with Stan Tech. That's the only project that I'm aware of that is still ongoing, is the tunnels. Yes, so we are currently, I should say, engineering is currently working on the tunnels. But I think, to go back to your point, is every time you change something, you have to get that, because it's historic, you have to get that approval from SHPO, and that's where we were talking, when we were talking rehabbing, you know, there's that 30-day review period. So it's not going to be something that you just go up there and a week and change. You're going to have to go through that same process with Stan Tech, with the historic architect, and, and get those approvals.
Well, see, that's where I, I guess I, I'd be willing to risk our, whatever you call it, you know, and to just put on a little moxie and say, you know what? I'd argue this before the Supreme Court. If I was trying to save that building, and I did something in a small way that saved the building, that was against the laws of SHPO, but they would never sue us for that, they would say, yeah, you did the right thing. But if we're going to let this little law stop us, again, go another month, another two months, I'm saying we're wrong. We just stand up, put on our boots, and say, look, SHPO, we, we got to stop this moisture, whether you like it or not, and we're not going to destroy the building. We're going to fill it with some foam, we're going to stop the moisture. Why don't we just do it as a council? I'll just make, I'm just going to make that motion. I want us to stop the moisture coming into the towers up there, down there, you know, in a way that isn't destructive.
No motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
I think it needs to be a resolution if we're going to spend money.
I think you need to know how much you're going to spend.
Yeah, well, can, and, and I don't think, I don't think SHPO is going to say we can't put a foam product that collects, I mean, we were looking at the demolition of the tunnels, right?
But any. I just think maybe if, if the council wants to do, take action, put it in the form of a resolution directing staff, i.e. the city engineer, to come back with, whether it's a public improvement project or whatever, so that you have an idea of what kind of money you're spending.
By the next meeting.
What it's going to take.
Yeah. Okay, I'll put, I'll add that, by the next meeting.
It's a resolution, it's a second.
It could simply be a motion directing staff to come back with that. Okay, just a motion, great.
And then we'll know if we have the money to do it anyway.
Yeah.
By the next meeting. Let's, we have a motion on the floor, let's, let's go ahead and vote on this motion.
Your Honor, one quick question. So it's purely exploratory, we're just directing staff to look into it?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the council? I just have one announcement. Guy was not able to be here tonight. He asked me if I would just, again, he mentioned having city council members help with the spring cleanup out of the, out of the landfill on Saturday, and/or if any council member is, is interested in the, the night that your ward is, is open in the evening, spend an hour out there. Guy asked me to ask for that, and so if you would, just individually let me know, or let, you know, we can let Guy know who's going to be able to, to be there for a couple hours on Saturday. Jim?
We have on here a Memorial Day, and City Hall is closed. I would also like to say that we are dedicating the Veterans Memorial that morning after the river ceremony. We will do the dedication at that time, 10:30 approximately.
Monday, May 29th.
May 29th, Monday.
Add.
Veterans Park.
Veterans Park. Thank you, Jim. There's nothing else to come before the council adjourned.
To a Port Authority meeting.
Hang around for the Port Authority meeting.